Much, Tom. My name is Brad Pomerantz. I'm the host of Charter's Local Edition Charter Special Edition. Charter Local Edition airs on Headline News, Special Edition on Channel 101. If you don't get Charter, you should. We can help you after this, I'm sure, if you want to sign up for Charter. I feel right at home, of course, today with these debates, which are designed to inform the public, just as we try to do on Local Edition. As we all know, voting is a responsibility and as a privilege, everyone should take it very seriously. It is important to participate in the electoral process, and the best way to do that is by making an informed choice. It is my hope that this debate and others being put on by the Rain Cross Group will help voters feel better prepared to cast their ballots and lead to high voter participation. I would like to begin this morning by introducing you to our distinguished panel of questionnaires. As Tom mentioned, Gail Hammond, who is the editorial page editor of The Press Enterprise, was scheduled to be with us, but she is ill, and we wish her the best. Filling in for Gail today is Damian O'Farrell of the Rain Cross Group. Damian is an assistant director with Path of Life Ministries, a faith-based nonprofit operating homeless shelter program in the city of Riverside. He is also a director of community development with today's Urban Renewal Network. Next to Damian, Orlando Ramirez, who is the editor of the Spanish-language newspaper La Presa, which serves a vital role in informing Spanish-speaking residents of Riverside about important news and events. And our third panelist for this debate is Rain Cross Group member Gary Christmas, who retired last year as Riverside County's Deputy CEO. His 30 years of service include stints as the first county librarian, and most recently, as the county legislative coordinator. I want to thank you all for joining us at the Rain Cross debates. Let's turn our attention to the candidates themselves. As we have stated this morning, we are featuring candidates who are seeking election in Ward Number One. Please remember, in this election, which is being conducted by mail only, a candidate must receive 50 percent plus one of the votes in order to win the election outright. If no candidate receives that 50 percent plus one of all the votes, the top two vote-getters will square off in a runoff election this fall. The incumbent in Ward One is Mike Gardner. Mr. Gardner, who is completing his first term on the City Council, is retired from Sun California Edison. He previously served on Riverside's Community Police Review Commission. Dom Betro has served as president of the Family Services Association since 1985, and has been an instructor of management at UCR since 1989. He previously served on the Riverside City Council, representing Ward One. Devon Petrazello teaches at-risk youth, is a former business owner, and previously served as administrative assistant to Riverside Mayor Ron Lovridge. She is active in the PTA, Girl Scouts, AYSO, and other organizations. Marisa Valdez-Jeager is a transportation policy manager for the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority. She previously served on the city's Airport Commission, Human Relations Commission, and Code of Conduct Committee. Thank you all for agreeing to participate in these debates. We appreciate it very much. We have some rules, and here they are. We will begin with the candidates' two-minute introductory statements. Afterwards, the panelists will ask questions, and each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. Each candidate will also receive 30 seconds to offer a rebuttal or amplification of his or her initial remarks. As moderator, it is my purview, it is within my purview, to invite a panelist to follow up on a question, or ask a candidate to focus their answers more closely on the question being asked. If I feel a candidate is avoiding the question, I reserve the right to ask the candidate to be more specific and more to the point with the question. We respectfully ask our audience members to refrain from excessive applause. Such excessive applause only takes away from time available to a candidate for answering the panel's questions. And with that, I would like to welcome Mike Gardner to open with his introductory statement. Gardner, you have two minutes.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming this morning. I've worked hard to represent you well these last four years. I am proud that we've maintained a balanced budget and a healthy reserve during these tough economic times. Most other California cities have not fared anywhere nearly as well. When I was sworn into office, the economy was booming, the city was hiring, the general fund budget was at an all-time high. During the recession, we've had to trim more than $30 million from the general fund budget, and we've had to reduce the city workforce by about 20 percent. I was a leader in the effort to make these reductions with very few layoffs, and with minimum impact on city services. In the past four years, Riverside has made immense strides in improving our parks, roads, community centers, and utility systems, and we provided thousands of local jobs in doing that. Now, we must focus on permanent, high-quality jobs so that our young adults don't have to leave the area to find work when they finish their education. Riverside is uniquely poised to attract high-tech and clean manufacturing jobs because we are a desirable city with low utility rates and available space. This is our future. We must seize it now. I have the knowledge and the leadership skills to get us there. I have a reputation for being honest, accessible, and responsive. I've demonstrated my ability to work with a wide variety of people and to forge partnerships to accomplish difficult tasks. I'm known for not bearing a grudge, and I can fight you tooth and nail one day and hold hands with you to accomplish something we both agree with on the next. This job requires that ability and a commitment to rise above personal feelings to accomplish what's best for our city. I look forward to helping lead Riverside into the future over the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. He is followed by Dom Betro. Mr. Betro?
This is an economically challenging time of historic proportions, with many of our families and neighbors struggling tremendously. It is a time requiring experience, competence, and integrity to continue to restore and reinvigorate this great city. A time when having vision and the ability to implement strategically is needed. It is a time for bold and demonstrated leadership, the type of leadership that will stop the spending of millions of taxpayer dollars on questionable projects, assist homeowners and small-business owners suffering economically, fight for the creation of good jobs and economic opportunities for all citizens, and contribute proven fiscal and strategic leadership for the post-Renaissance government restructuring and downsizing era, while also ensuring that city council positions remain public service endeavors and not full-time jobs with unnecessary perks at taxpayer expense. I have proven such capabilities in the past as a social entrepreneur directing Family Service Association for the past 26 years and annually providing 500 jobs, services to 25,000 families, and budget growth from 18 to 23 million in the midst of this great recession. And as the previous Ward Councilman, I brought the same restless quest for innovation and excellence in public service, most notably via the Renaissance and the restoration of the Fox Theater. By every measure, these efforts have been very good for Riverside and purposely planned to be completed, as acknowledged by Mr. Gardner. However, in a time of harsh economic realities, we must now plan effectively and realistically for what is next. I am ready, able, and willing to take on the new challenges we face with hope and vigor, and together to continue to move Riverside forward. I look forward to presenting more details today on the specific initiatives I plant the champion and which can be found in my materials. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Betro. Devon Petrazello, please join us.
Thank you, Rain Cross Group, for your efforts in putting together this venue so that all the citizens of Riverside can make a more informed choice regarding who they want to lead them in the future. I'm running for City Council because, like you, I'm sick and tired of the way the city management does whatever they please, and the City Council just goes along to get along. Putting people out of business, making good workers lose their jobs, and seizing our pocketbooks so that they can spend money we don't have and mortgage our city beyond its limits. What my goal is, as your councilperson, is to fight this wasteful spending and breach of trust. I realize that this city is in a great amount of financial stress. City management borrows money from one department to pay for other departments and councils' pet projects. We need to put an end to secret discretionary spending, overtaxing, and high punitive fines, such as parking and street-sweeping fines that fill the city's coffers. We must remember that the backbone of this city's success is in the everyday man and woman, many of whom are in this room now, who make this city work, and the business people who live in this community, who are also in this room and are hurting because our city has put in parking meters, seized their property eminent domain, and become the landlord of the buildings downtown to control who is allowed to own and run a business. We are not the cause of this city's mismanagement, and we should not be held responsible for it. City Council should be held responsible. We need a City Council that will stand for this community, that will do their homework to understand city finances and not jeopardize the future of our city. The management of this city is much like the movie The Wizard of Oz. The city has no heart, driving businesses like BioCorium and Pacific Sticks out of downtown, wrongfully firing employees because they are whistleblowers, too old, or do not fit the city profile. The management of this city has no brains, restoring the Fox Theater to its grandeur only to have it sit empty on a Friday or Saturday night and show venues that nobody comes to, spending over a million dollars a year to manage it and have the Fox Foundation run by city employees.
Two minutes has ended.
But worst of all, my opinion is the fact that we have a main library that is disposable.
Thank you so much. Now, I would like to invite Maria Valdez-Jeager.
I would like to first thank the Rain Cross Group, The Press Enterprise, and La Presa for hosting this debate. It provides a great service to all of our community. Like most cities in America, Riverside faces hard times. The challenges we confront are serious. Unemployment is higher here than almost anywhere in the country. Distress is rising in our neighborhoods, and our quality of life has eroded. As a Riverside native who loves the city, I believe it is time to restore the civic institutions and core values that sit this city a remarkable place to live, work, and raise a family. Our city grew fast in recent years, but jobs did not keep pace. Without job growth, there will be no recovery. We don't need any more slick slogans or marketing campaigns. I will aggressively recruit businesses willing to put down deep roots and build a strong, diversified, high-paying job base here in Riverside. We must address this economic distress in our neighborhoods. Riverside is at the center of the foreclosure crisis, due in no small part to land- use decisions made by our own City Council. Now, block after block that I've walked, houses stand vacant, businesses stand boarded up. Once, our once-stable neighborhoods are turning over to absentee landlords and drug pushers. I will defend our neighborhoods from this growing wave of blight. In addition, much expense has gone into making downtown Riverside a tourist destination, while we must ensure the success of the Fox Theater and the Mission Inn. We should not push aside those who make these investments possible, the residents of Riverside. I will put the best interest of our residents back at the center of the decision-making in City Hall. And finally, we must hold City Hall accountable. The financial losses on the Star Trek exhibit and the gross mishandling with the land swap of the old Marcy Branch Library are clear evidence of the need for fearless, common-sense leadership in City Hall. I am running for City Council because I want to work to make Riverside's future bright again. I am running to revive Riverside's economy, improve our quality of life, and restore trust in City Hall for the next generation.
Thank you. The first question will be asked by Damian O'Farrell. I remind the candidates, you have 90 seconds to respond, and then a 30-second option. After, I will provide the order as we proceed through the debate. Damian?
What specific characteristics and qualities would you expect of new businesses in Ward One to cater to young patrons? And what are the retail and entertainment strategies and/or incentives that you would support to assist and attract businesses that cater to this demographic?
And we'll start with Mr. Gardner.
Let me start with the business aspects first. I think we would do really well if we can attract a sports-bar kind of establishment to the downtown area. One thing we lack some days is things for people to do in the evening that will keep people downtown after they get off work, cause people who don't live or work in the area to come to our downtown. Something like that would be a benefit. We are building a black box theater adjacent to the Fox Theater. That will have on the order of 200 performance nights, and I think a significant portion of the events that occur there will be things that younger people want to go to. We also are refurbishing the municipal auditorium, and that can be a venue for events that younger people would like to attend.
Thank you. Mr. Betro?
Well, unfortunately, we built the Class A building in the Fox Theater and put in a Class F management, which the incumbent has supported. So, we need to start there. We need to also address the issue of the nonprofit foundation that could be engaging the community more, including the young folks. But it goes beyond entertainment. We need to have jobs and housing. And we can do that. We need to incentivize young people staying here. That was the purpose when I was in office, of trying to bring housing downtown and trying to build Class A corporate offices to attract young folks to stay here rather than looking to LA or San Francisco or other urban areas. So, entertainment and that type of attraction is one piece of the puzzle. But we need to engage the 50,000 students who are in this city each day, but leave here at night and on the weekends, and we're not doing that. We basically are content to have them go to universities here and then not really try to attract them in ways that meet their needs as opposed to trying to give them every message possible that, "Get educated here, but go find your future somewhere else."
Thank you, Mr. Betro. Ms. Petrazello?
Yes, we need to also realize that this city has over 100,000 youth and parents. We need to attract family things downtown. Yes, we have a lot of youth, 50,000, that go to our universities, but it's not our children here in this community who are going to our universities. We have the lowest college-going rate next to Las Vegas, Nevada. So, if we want the students to stay in this community, we need to make sure it's our children that are going to the universities to stay. We do need arts and entertainment for the young people. Many college students that I've talked to said there's nothing for them to do down here. Incentives, I believe is the second part of your question. We need to make sure that businesses are not heavily taxed. We have a local sewer rate that's going to be doubling by the year 2014, and many of our businesses are going to bear the brunt of that heavy tax. So, we need to make sure that our businesses are supported in what they're doing.
Thank you. Ms. Valdez-Jeager?
Sure. My name's Marisa Valdez-Jeager, and I am 37 years old. And when I've walked the streets of a neighborhood and spoke to the businesses here in Riverside, my generation is concerned about a couple things. There is not enough family events in the downtown area. First and foremost, as a councilperson, I would want to make sure that this city taps in to hear from the generation, not speak to the generation. I want to make sure that in any decision I make, that I have groups, like the PIC group, groups like the Youth Council. In addition, we need to tap into the young professionals who do commute outside of the city every day, to the young families who can't afford to go work, and instead, they're staying at home to raise their families. We need to make sure that there is something for everyone in the downtown area, but not only the downtown neighborhoods and area, but making sure they're taking advantage of the neighborhood parks, the after-school programs at the community centers. Communication is key, and it needs to go both ways. Second, in terms of businesses, businesses that I've talked to, both here in Riverside as well as outside Riverside, are looking at opportunities. They're looking at how hard it is to get to the city. They're looking at how hard is it to get to a competitive job workforce that they can tap into to keep their businesses here, but also expand their businesses here. They're looking at the healthcare system that's provided here, as well as they're looking at the education system here. We have got to tap in in a comprehensive plan to address all those issues if we want a viable downtown economic economy here in Riverside.
Mr. Gardner, you have 30 seconds to respond if you'd like.
I don't think I addressed the jobs aspect well in my first answer. I'd like to add to that a bit. I think we need a particular focus in some industry sectors, medical, healthcare, high-tech, research, and clean manufacturing in particular. These are jobs that pay good wages, have good benefits, and that will give our students the opportunity to continue to live here after they finish their education.
Mr. Betro, 30 seconds if you'd like.
You know, this community has always been tremendously supportive of its youth, both through its informal organizations as well as its formal programs. Like, the one I always liked was Passport to College. I think we have to wrap our youth in the context of that this city cares about them, wants to make their future here, and so we have to develop the continuum and put in the jobs, the high-tech jobs, the graphic jobs, the things that the young folks are looking to do and unfortunately, looking elsewhere.
Time. Thank you, Dom. Ms. Petrazello, 30 seconds if you'd like.
We have a new medical school going in at UCR. We need to make sure our students, our youth, are trained in those sciences so that they can go and go to the medical school. And we're going to have a lot of jobs that will develop around the medical school here at UCR and the medical school going over at RCC. When our kids here, our youth here are trained, they can go into those jobs, then they can spend their money downtown and in our city, and they will stay.
Thank you. Ms. Valdez-Jeager, 30 seconds if you'd like.
Sure. Currently, the trend of all of our young professionals, as well as those youth who are entering the workforce, we need to also acknowledge the fact that they will have four careers in their lifetime. And so, we need to acknowledge that moving forward on any proposals that we are seeking out to attract them to come into. We need to realize that we will be constantly evolving industry as well as business offerings here in Riverside, and I hope that all students, all young professionals, find their niche, their passion, in opportunities here in Riverside.
Thank you, candidates. Our next question comes from Orlando Ramirez of La Presa.
Consider the goals of the Seizing Our Destiny agenda. Which goals do you find most important, and how will you direct and hold city staff accountable to implement these goals?
We'll start with Mr. Betro.
Well, unfortunately, I disagree with the whole Seizing Our Destiny approach. It's more like a seizure of our destiny, and I think we need to realize our destiny. We have plenty of plans. I remember when I first came into office, and I asked, "Give me all the plans that pertain to Ward One." I filled up half a roomful of plans, none of which had been implemented. The most egregious was the park on the north side that was first designed in 1978. The time for planning is ended. We have plenty of plans. We know what has to be done. We've already been put on the path with the Renaissance. We just did a 2025 plan back in 2005, and now we have this other plan. It is all campaign political gimmicks by folks who are in office to say, "Hey, I'm doing something. I'm doing a plan." What we accomplished from 2003 to 2007 was to do things that had not been done in 30 years. And we need that more than ever now, but we need a different focus. It's not about buildings, and it's not about reviving lost assets. It's about developing our people by the homeowners who have been totally under siege with hidden taxes and a utility transfer fee that burdens them, all kinds of things which we will discuss.
Dom, that plan has 11 routes. It was written by both the City Council, the city staff, as well as UCR Business School. And so, I just want to zero in. I know you don't like the plan very much, but if you had to pick one of the 11 routes that you see as the most valuable, which 11?
I don't, I would pick the "live, work, and play" kind of emphasis in the plan, but I really, I think it's a useless plan.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Petrazello? Am I saying that correctly?
Petrazello.
I got it.
I would choose Route Number Seven, which has to do with youth and education. But I believe that the Seizing Our Destiny, like many of the plans that we do have here in Riverside, took a lot of time, a lot of community input, and a lot of money. Where we fall short is having additional measurable goals and objectives. What we need to do is make sure that that component is there, that we're holding our feet to the fire and saying, "What does that look like? If we are doing, if it's successful or not, or if it's a failure? What does that look like in the community?" In the classroom, we say, "If it's not working, then we need to do something else." So, we need to have a way to measure if it's working or not.
Thank you, Devon. Ms. Valdez-Jeager?
Yeah, when I first read Seize Our Destiny, what my glaring thought was was that nowhere in that document does it really tackle the transportation issue. And so, first and foremost, if we really want to have a product that's comprehensive, you need to be able to put in the transportation components that are viable and needed in this area in order for us to get to one destination to another. Second, I personally have spoken to high school seniors here in Riverside Unified School District, and I asked them, "Have you heard of the Seize the Destiny document? What are your thoughts?" They knew nothing about Seize the Destiny. That is a huge opportunity that we missed during the initial outreach for Seize Our Destiny commentary. I would move forward in making sure that, one, we have a comprehensive roadmap that is also missing in Seize Our Destiny. It's one thing to say what we want to do. It's a whole nother importance to make sure that we have the plan in place on whose role, who's going to be accountable for those roads moving forward. So, that is something that I definitely want to make sure is emphasized and move forward on as the next councilperson for here in Ward One.
Maria, the plan is in place, so if you had to pick one route, which route would you pick?
We need to make sure that we have livability, to address the livability aspects.
Mr. Gardner?
The route that I would pick is Route Number One, Economic Development and Job Creation. I think that is the most important thing for our city in the coming years. There are no unimportant routes in Seizing Our Destiny. As Mr. Pomerantz pointed out, Seizing Our Destiny is not a government plan. It didn't come out of City Hall. It came out of the community. It's going to work because there is a champion assigned to each route and a set of people who work each route, and they come from the community. There's staff support for each route. There's a council member or the mayor who is the elected supporter of each route. But let me be clear, this is not the city's plan in terms of city government. This is the city's plan in terms of the community. It will work precisely because of that.
Thank you. Now, we're going to allow 30 seconds of comment. We'll start with Mr. Betro if you'd like.
This is the rebuttal comment?
If you'd like.
Well, once again, planning and attaching resources are two different things. This document has no resources attached to it, and that's where the lie is. Is get engaged, get involved, just like on the downtown library, and we'll respond to what you articulate, but oops, we forgot, there's no resources.
Thank you, Dom. Devon, 30 seconds if you'd like.
Well, I believe we paid for the plan Seizing Our Destiny out of the city funds, but again, we need a results component in everything that we do in this city. If we aren't results-oriented, then we're going to be doing the same thing that we're always seem to be doing, is recreating ourselves, and nothing happened. So, everyone in the city really doesn't know who we are, what we're about, the youth. But so, we really need to make sure there's a results component and how it impacts our communities.
Marisa, 30 seconds if you'd like.
Sure. Moving forward, any roadmap that is put before the community, as well as the businesses who worked very hard to put this plan together, needs to make sure that it clearly lists all the accountability, all the resources that are applied to each of those roadmaps. But in addition to that, we must make sure we have youth perspective involved in that process. We must make sure that we provide opportunities for our students at Albert and Riverside Unified School District, so they feel vested in our destiny, our future.
Thank you, candidates. Our third question from Gary Christmas.
What is the appropriate amount of time that you believe a city council representative should devote to the job? And what other resources that should be provided to council members?
Can I interrupt, please? I forgot to ask Mr. Gardner if he'd like to rebut. I apologize, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you. Unfortunately, Mr. Betro has been away from City Hall long enough that he isn't aware of what's actually happening any longer. There are significant resources that are devoted to making Seizing Our Destiny work. There are people from each of our three universities and the community college system. There are people from the business community. There are people from our public schools. There are city staff. It is a well-supported document and plan, and it will work.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Mr. Christmas, please.
Thank you. What is the appropriate amount of time that you believe a city council representative should devote to the job? And what other resources that should be provided to council members, such as a city car, car allowance, and paid staff?
We'll start with Ms. Petrazello.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time? I couldn't hear the second part.
Yes. I'll repeat the whole question. What is the appropriate amount of time that you believe a city council representative should devote to the job? And what are the resources that should be provided to council members, such as a city car, a car allowance? resources that should be provided to council members, such as a city car, a car allowance, or paid staff?
Well, someone can be in office and spend a good amount of time but not be effective. So I think it boils down to how effective you are. You can be there full-time. Resources? I think what's fair, there used to be a stipend, and that seemed to work for everyone. It was for years until our current city management came on and changed the dynamics of it. But as a former city employee, I know that I used my car, and I didn't get compensated for it at all. But I believe that we're a fair city, that these citizens in our community will back what's fair for the city council people.
Ms. Valdez-Jeager.
Obviously, we know time is priceless. And so in terms of to meet the demands of the job of a council person in this day and age, has increased tremendously due to the fact of our current economic downturn, as well as the additional demands that some of our management has provided. And made sure that, as council members, we need to make sure we are more diligent on, in terms of how they've been processing all of our city's interests and projects. Moving forward, in terms of resources, we're talking about in overall, putting it more into perspective, we're talking about an industry here on how all of our cities are handling the resources provided to all our council members. We have currently the will of the voters. In the last charter review, continued to have a part, the request, and the voters approved this, a part-time city council. While others have said that this needs to be full-time, well, I definitely want to not be self-serving in that. I will definitely honor the Charter Review Committee that's currently in process with their recommendations, moving forward to give to the voters the right to vote on what they want, first and foremost, before we go into the dynamics of how much time and should this be full-time or part-time. This needs to be the will of the voters to decide this, and moving forward, handle it accordingly.
Thank you. Quick follow-up. What's your sense about the second part of the question? What are the resources that should be provided to council members, such as a city car, car allowance, and paid staff? Marissa?
I am definitely open into having a pool car system. So in fact, when we need to travel outside the area, there's efforts, carpooling. I'm definitely a ridesharing, carpooler, and mass transit supporter. So with that, moving forward, council members can carpool together, besides the Brown Act, of course. In addition, in terms of staff, of course, we need to have staff in order to be able to monitor all the issues. We're not perfect. We're definitely always needing reminders, et cetera. But there's a process in place. We have a 3-1-1 system here in the city. It's being handled well. Residents like it. We need to make sure we secure that process because we're spending a lot of taxpayer dollars to support that system.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
I think it's important to understand that the charter itself is silent as to whether a council position is full-time, part-time. It lays out what the council members' responsibilities are, but it does not say anything about how many hours should be devoted to that. I personally put 10 to 12 hours a day, six days a week, into this job, and I think it demands that. I think the city, and Ward One, and the constituents deserve no less than that. I don't think that I can do a good job spending part-time doing this job because of the number of citizen requests that come in, the variety of meetings that are held that I need to attend. So I spend full-time. I will give you full-time. Resources, I've never taken a city car, don't want a city car. I don't think I've checked out a city pool car more than a dozen times in the time that I've served in office on paid staff. Mr. Betro actually created the concept of the legislative field representatives, and I think it's a beneficial one. Most of the council members have a field representative. I think it is very helpful, and I would support retaining that.
Mr. Betro.
The charter and the historical role of the city council members in this city have been one of governance and one of trusteeship. Governance to set policy and to direct the city manager, and trusteeship to manage fiscally astutely the resources and assets of this city. What we have been talking about is warping that into some sense of another bureaucratic worker with more political time. When I was on the council, I worked 25 to 30 hours a week, and it was more than sufficient to cover these roles. And I relied on city staff. At that time, we were implementing the 3-1-1 system. And yes, we did experiment with legislative aides, but they were contract personnel. And as far as I was concerned, that was not going to continue. What Mr. Gardner has done was change these positions quietly last summer to full-time benefited positions, costing the city taxpayers $75,000 a year for a legislative aide. So which is it? Is he working 24/7, or does he have somebody else that's paying, being paid out of our tax dollars? He does not take a city car, he does not use a city car, but he takes the $350 allowance each month to ride supposedly a Segway, which has no reimbursable value.
Time, Mr. Betro, time. As part of the 30-second option, I'd like you to consider the following question. Riverside is one of the largest cities in California. It continues to grow. Marissa brought up the issue of part versus full-time council people. I'd like to know the answer to this question. Would you support a full-time council member with full-time pay based upon a formula of a comparable city in our state? And we'll start with Ms. Petrazzello.
Well, we do have, city council is there to set policy and make sure that we are fiduciary and ethically managing the city in the way it should be managed. We are a growing city. We're a huge city. It's a very tough time. It's a complex time. We have a lot of initiatives that need to be done, completed. I would support it being full-time, if that's what the citizens of this community want. But I also see that we can do a good job doing it on a part-time basis.
Thank you. Thank you. Marissa?
Based on the goals that this city council adopts after a lot of community input, I would hope, we need to make sure that we address the charter review appropriately. And I truly feel it's premature to say a statement, because again, we are asked our community members to serve on this committee to evaluate all aspects of the city moving forward. So...
Marissa, if there was a ballot initiative which provided that Riverside city council members would be full-time with full-time pay at a comparable rate to other cities who have full-time council member, how would you vote?
I would first ask the residents of Ward One, first and foremost.
How would you vote as a citizen?
Do they want a full-time or part-time?
As a citizen.
As a private citizen, based on the future needs and the future growth forecast here in the area, I would support a full-time.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
I would support that sort of an initiative because it gives an opportunity for particularly younger people who are at a point in their career where they may not be able to devote full-time to being a council member, to run and to serve. I think we would be able to provide a broader range of people to serve on our council, more representative of our community, if it were a full-time position paid at full-time rates.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Mr. Betro.
I believe these positions are public service positions. City council positions right now are the highest paid of any city council in this county, and our city manager is the highest paid in the state of California. It has gotten way out of hands. I agree with Mr. Gardner that this should be for everyone to serve, especially those who are working and have a perspective to bring to the council. And I think we are way, I would not, I would accept what the voters say, but as when I was on the council the last time, I only accepted 40% of my pay because I felt that the city's
Thank you, Dom.
raise was ineffective. I would do the same.
Thanks so much. Our next question, back to Damian O'Farrell.
Riverside competes for residents as well as businesses. In the competition to attract and keep emerging talent, what do you think the younger workforce wants and needs, and what are you proposing to meet these needs?
And we're going to start with Ms. Valdez-Jeager.
Many folks and youth, young professionals, moving forward, if they want to stay in the city, if they want to move to the city, they're looking at the overall package. They're looking at, is housing affordable? Are they, they're looking at our school system and how are the results in testing? They're looking at, how doable is it to have jobs that pay $50,000 to $120,000 salary? They're looking at, is it easy to get to the city or outside the city? They're looking at, can you walk? Can you bike? Can you hike trails? What kind of family-oriented events can you do for free? But also, how much is it going to cost them if they go to local theaters, go to local restaurants, and are they going to be able to afford that? So on the overall package in terms of recruiting talent, it's very difficult, because you're constantly in the public sector competing with the private sector in terms of benefits and overall retirement packages, as well as time commitment. So that is what I would be focused in on in terms of attracting our young professionals here, is making sure that, again, we have to address all of that together in order to make a brighter future for our families and young professionals.
Thank you. Mike?
I think what younger people are looking for and need are, first, jobs. Second, good housing in nice neighborhoods, a good school system, both the primary and high school level and post-secondary, more things to do, and better transportation. We're doing a number of those things, and we can always do more. But I've talked about jobs, and particularly in the area of housing, we are continuing to build new housing in desirable areas of the city. It's a time where it's difficult to fund a housing development of any sort. So that has definitely slowed down. We're trying to partner with the schools to improve the perception of our schools. Our schools are actually good schools, but we do have a perception problem. We need to work on that. Talked some about things to do. Transportation is, I think, kind of a key. Our municipal transportation system, RTA, is not everything that it could be, partly because of funding restraints, partly possibly because we just haven't planned it as well as we could. We are improving significantly. Bike lanes, alternate methods of transportation, I ride one, and I think that those are the things that younger people are looking for and would like to have.
Time. Mr. Betro.
The two strengths of this city have always been and continue to be affordable home ownership and small businesses, which generate the jobs, the predominant amount of jobs. It is one thing to talk about wanting to produce jobs, and it is another thing to put some resources behind it. And that's my main problem with what's going on at City Hall right now, is there's a lot of talk but not a lot of resources. I would carve out of the budget $3 million and set up an incentive fund to fund 200 to 300 jobs by matching dollar-for-dollar up to $15,000, any small business that would create a job. That's the way you get things done. On the home ownership front, we received $11 million from the government because of the large amount of foreclosures here in the past two years, and we produced maybe about 30 homes with that. I am sure that the private sector and others could find ways to leverage that much more effectively. And we need to start thinking outside of the box of how do we incentivize and maximize the two strengths of this city, and not just put a whole bunch of planning and gobbledygook on top of it that doesn't amount to anything at the end of the day. We need to create real jobs. You need to incentivize that, and real home ownership opportunities. And that's the way you will attract people here. That's what has always attracted people to Riverside, in addition to, of course, our beautiful community and our beautiful environment. But we have to start thinking
Time, please.
in real ways and prioritizing.
Tom, thank you. Devon?
We're talking about attracting people here. Well, we have people here. We need to take care of the people in our community. I believe the way to create new jobs is to make sure that our youth are engaged in training, and that they're going to be able to go to the colleges and universities or higher-level training. We need to, our schools are good schools, but we need to do something differently. We need to create academies. We need to create science, art, these type of academies to plug our children in early, and then they will stay here because they will create that new economy and those jobs in their community, and they will stay here. Our strength of this city is our universities and our colleges. 30% of the jobs here in this city are in education. We need to capitalize on the research that's coming out of the university, create jobs from that research. It's the latest technology, cutting-edge technology. So let's tap into that. Let's have some dialogue happen. Let's get our kids engaged so that they can participate in those programs and then be a part of our community and create jobs from those opportunities from the colleges and universities.
Thank you. We now have the opportunity for a 30-second comment option. We'll start with Marissa.
Again, if you're a young professional here or you're moving in here, you're looking at, if you're going to raise a family, what opportunities are there for your family? Can you afford it? If you're a college graduate, or if you're a high school graduate, you're fearing that you're not going to be allowed a job, you're not going to be able to afford to stay into college once you're in because of class reductions, as well as we're looking at the California economy. So you need to both look at the state economy, what's the impact? And you look at the local economy, and you look at need. What's the future? Are we going to have a viable economy here in Riverside?
Mr. Gardner.
I think one of the things that we need to focus on is that we need jobs for the people who are here more than we need more people here. We have 40,000 students in this city, and when the majority of them finish their educations, they go elsewhere to find work. So I would focus more on providing the things that we need to keep our young people, as opposed to things to draw more people.
Mr. Betro.
I think the other component that I would focus on is transportation, as has been mentioned. And in particular, I think it is beyond time to build the multimodal transportation center downtown. That is what will connect people for the jobs that are here. And it has been a failure, starting with leaving the Greyhound where it is, and not capsulizing on this possibility, which would give us a true niche in terms of both attracting people as well as serving the people
Time.
who cannot afford cars to get to their jobs.
Ms. Petrazzello.
Again, I emphasize that we take care of the people and the youth in our community. Make sure we start at a very young age, getting them interested, reducing the crime rate, getting them plugged into something that's viable, that's going to create sustainable living wage jobs so that they can afford to stay in this community. They can afford to spend their money in this community and attend the events and the things that we are creating for them.
Thank you, candidates. We continue with Orlando Ramirez of La Prinsa.
The 2010 census shows Riverside is a majority-minority community. 49% Latino, 7% African-American, 7% Asian, and 24% Caucasian. What is the city doing, or should be doing, to reach out and address the needs of our growing and diverse community?
We're going to start with Devon.
In 2012, it will be 50.8% Latino. I believe, again, we need to start with our youth. I teach at-risk youth, and 98% of them are Latino. I see the challenges that these families have. Many don't have transportation. Many are working minimum-wage jobs just to put food on the table, and it's difficult for them to even come to school, let alone entertain the thought of going to college. So we really need to make sure that we're taking care of our families in this community, that we're addressing the needs, some of the basic needs of our families in this community, so that they can go on to higher-level training. The complexities of the families are quite, they're quite complex. I see it every day. Children coming to school hungry, children coming to school with no shoes, and yet we want to talk about sending them to college. That's the furthest thing from a lot of their parents' mind. We also have a 21% single households in this city. So we need to really look at those, that data, and start addressing that data so that we can provide opportunities to learn for all of our youth in this city.
I'd like to expand and have you really focus on what this I'd like to expand and have you really focus on what the city can do, not the private sector. What can the city do to address its citizens who are now majority minority?
Well, I believe that we can address housing, affordable housing. We also need to help parents so that they can make sure their children are going to school, make sure they can provide, we can provide programs to help those parents. Counseling, what our expectations of those families are in order to make sure that their children go to school, even perhaps provide some type of stipend to go on to college. Most of the, a lot of my students' parents don't know anything about college and believe it's beyond their reach. So we can work with partners to make sure that we educate families to know that they can reach higher educational goals.
Thank you. Marissa? You're next. Marissa is next.
Thank you. Thank you, Orlando, for actually giving us the stats so everyone is aware of both 2010 but also moving forward in terms of how our city is evolving. We're in a state of growing pains. We are in a transition where all of us must understand the different demographics here in our city. As Human Relations Commissioner for over six years here in this city, we offered many opportunities of education, both with youth, both with different community organizations, traveling around the city to make sure that everyone understood the different aspects and demographics of our city. Part of that was knowing what you don't know, and being okay with fear, but going above the fear and making sure you truly understand the needs of the different communities. All of us communicate in very different ways. We are all very different students here on this dais as well as in the audience, as well as those who are at home. We all learn differently. I'm a daughter of teachers. We are constantly exposed to making sure that we experience different viewpoints, because that is the most important thing you can do here as a community. So you understand when a friend asks for help, when a family needs assistance, when a city staff needs assistance moving through the bureaucracy, when residents see inaccuracies. We can all work together to come to a solution. And so in terms of the diversity, that's what the city can offer, an open dialogue on what are the needs are and how we can best address them by looking at the issues within each community and going each neighborhood at.
Marissa? I'm going to follow up and really ask you to zero in on what the city can do to address the needs of our growing and diverse population other than dialoguing.
Not only dialogue, but it's also communication. We need to make sure that our city staff are prepared and understand how to communicate with the different communities that are here. While I've been walking, while I've been talking to businesses, some of them don't even know what resources are available to the city. Others don't even know, you know, the 3-1-1 system. While I've been talking to them, now they're using 3-1-1 system and they appreciate it. But they had to find out from me, a candidate running in the neighborhood, to let them know about it. Again, there's missed opportunities that we need to capture every day on how each, either we put it in print as a city, either during our conversations or city employees going out to the communities and through our commissions. We can assist the residents knowing what resources we provide now.
I do want to mention, this is not directed towards Ms. Valdez-Jeager. When I do a follow-up question, if you can keep it tight just for time, not specifically for you but for all the candidates. Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
I think one of the first things that the city needs to do is to recruit and promote its own employees in a way that is reflective of the makeup of our city, particularly in leadership positions and in publicly visible positions, police officers, firefighters, people who are at the counters and come to the counters when you go into City Hall. We can help mentor promising people from all races and ethnicities and creeds, and encourage them to improve themselves and to seek positions of visibility and responsibility. We need to do a better job of finding people to serve on our boards and commissions who are more reflective of the community at large. And lastly, I think the city needs to step up its involvement with the Hispanic and African-American chambers.
Mr. Gardner, are you aware if the city of Riverside maintains bilingual services? And if they do, do you believe those services have been effective?
Yes, they do. You can get a translator in, I think, thirty-odd languages, although not instantly. Many of the city's documents are printed in multiple languages, primarily English and Spanish, but they are available in some others as well. They are effective to some degree, but it can be improved.
Okay. Mr. Betro?
I have found Riverside to be a very welcoming place in terms of diversity of cultures and ethnicities. Even Italians are welcomed here. You know, I think you've got to go beyond welcoming, and as your questions are suggesting, you actually have to implement policies. I think we see that City Hall is still struggling with trying to implement those policies, such as what happened with the Charter Review Committee, not representative of the full perspective of cultures and ethnicities in our city. Anyone who's in private business knows you're losing more than half of your market if you do not have a Spanish-speaking capacity here in Southern California. The city has to do better. You just should not have to wait for a translator. We have to have people in positions who can do that. And we have to promote people to run for public office, representative of the diversity in our community. And we need to start with our commissions and committees. I've never felt that we've done a really adequate job with that. And finally, we have to be respective of all cultures, including our Chinese heritage. And when you put out messages like, you're not going to acknowledge a Chinatown that was one of the foundations of this city, you not only give that message to the Chinese community, but you send out a bad message to all the ethnicities in this city that they are not welcome, and we are not going to protect your heritage.
Mr. Gardner, would you like to follow up with thirty seconds?
I think I covered what I have to say.
Ms. Petrazzello, would you like to follow up?
Yes, I believe that we need, the city needs to be the one to set the standard and to be open and be inclusive. We say we're inclusive, but I personally have seen the applications come in and say, yes, no, yes, no. Okay, you can ask these people. That's not being transparent. That's not being transpicuous. We need to look to ourselves as a city and make sure we're doing the things we need to do before we ask the community to be inclusive.
Ms. Valdez-Jeager, would you like to follow up thirty seconds?
Yeah, I would just want to bring to the table, in addition, the city could be more consistent on overall outreach to all of our community organizations for any outreach for commissions, any outreach for new programs, any outreach for any of our festivals, especially multicultural festivals, as well as other community-based events at all of our facilities throughout the city.
And Mr. Betro?
I really don't have anything else to add.
Fair enough. Our next question from Gary Christmas of the Rain Cross Group.
When should the Greyhound bus station be moved to the downtown MetroLink station? And how would you ensure that local transportation is available to get riders to their destinations, example in the downtown area?
We will start with Ms. Valdez-Jeager.
Sure. I have been very open on the fact that I am very in support of a multimodal transportation center. All great cities have a component of this, whether you can walk there, bike there, motorcycle there, park there, as well as the commuter rail line of MetroLink, as well as RTA facilities. I would be in support of moving Greyhound as soon as the contractual agreement can be done. I would also make sure that, in terms of, you brought up the links, there are many models that can be used where we partner both with private and public. But right now, RTA cannot provide a charter service. So we would need to have some program in place where we, with the businesses and our bigger employers, specifically UC Riverside, Kaiser Permanente, and county as well as city, we need a partner to make sure we provide link systems that is a complement to the current RTA system. So specifically, move Greyhound as soon as we can, make sure that we partner with the businesses so we can provide the business links, so we can provide the links that people need to get to their jobs from the MetroLink system, from RTA. There's many people who commute outside the city, come into the city every day, but there's also a lot who commute from the city outside. So we need to have a dual beneficial system that's seamless to the customer.
Thank you. Ms. Petrazzello?
Wherever we move the Greyhound, we have to make sure it's accessible. We don't have those links. I personally tried, I live downtown, and tried when I worked in the mayor's office to use the public transportation system, and it wasn't user-friendly. And so we go back to what we know. We go back to our cars. Part of the general plan has bicycle paths and walking paths, which are wonderful. But then we do things like trying to put no parking over at Mount Rubido, and so it makes, it's not accessible. We have to make sure that when we make these decisions, we're making them for the people in the community. And if they're going to be able to access this transportation. And so we really need to look to the community to let us know what they want, what they'll use, rather than throwing good money after bad.
Could you answer the specific question, when should the Greyhound bus station be moved to the downtown MetroLink station?
You said where?
When.
Oh, when should it be moved? Say, I'm sorry.
That was your initial question, so do you have a response?
When it should be moved? Well, if we have a plan in place, then we can move it, a good plan that everybody's accepting. But if it's not going to work and people aren't going to access it, and we don't have those links to come in to work here, then obviously it's not going to work.
Okay. Mr. Betro?
Does that mean?
Dom, yeah, please.
The conceptual plans for putting the multimodal transportation center at Vine Street were in place before I left office in 2007. Here is an article from the Press Enterprise, which I just happened to have with me, and it says, "Plan for Riverside Transit Center near MetroLink trains is back on course October 27, 2009," the incumbent. It is not back on course. A backroom deal was done with Greyhound, giving them seven hundred thousand dollars, and they've stayed in the same place. We have people in this city who rely on the connectivity of transportation to get around. People who cannot visit their relatives elsewhere need Greyhound, need to be able to connect to a bus. It hasn't happened. There is no reason why it should not happen. It needs vision. It needs courage. It needs a champion. And it should have happened already, is the answer. But I would have it happen immediately because it is an integral part to everything we've been talking about, the economics, the jobs, the downtown, the students. You've got, if you want to be a big-time city, you've got to have a big-time transportation capacity. And the multimodal station downtown, including Greyhound, is the answer.
Mr. Gardner?
Well, Mr. Betro is partly right. The, there was a plan to move Greyhound and the primary downtown RTA station over to MetroLink when he was in office. When I was, when I took office, there was a new plan. It was to put Greyhound out in the middle of nowhere, on the north side, next to the freeway, where there are zero services. There was one RTA bus route that connected on every hour during daytime hours, not on weekends, not at night. It was a horrible place to put the Greyhound station. One of the first things I had to do was kill that idea and bring back to the console the idea that we needed to put Greyhound where it belongs, over by the MetroLink station. That process has been slowed down because Greyhound is something that many council members don't particularly want to have in the ward that they represent, and there is some resistance to putting it in Ward Two where the MetroLink station is. It should move as quickly as we can possibly do it. There are some studies that are just wrapping up on bus routes and how you would get in and out of that facility with buses. It is a little bit constrained. Those studies should have been done long ago, and Greyhound actually should be, should have been over at the MetroLink station by the time I took office.
Mr. Gardner, how would you respond to Mr. Betro's comment that the station did not move because of a seven hundred thousand dollar backroom deal?
It was not a backroom deal at all. It was a very public deal. And the deal was, that was offered to Greyhound, it was if they elected to leave the city of Riverside, they would be paid seven hundred odd thousand dollars. We did not especially want them to leave Riverside. I agree that they are a necessary resource for people who do not have the ability to use private vehicles or who choose not to. I'm glad to have Greyhound in Riverside, but it isn't in the right place. It doesn't have the right connections, and we need to get it moved.
Mr. Betro, thirty seconds for comment.
The deal was not done in public. It was done in closed session and may very well be in violation of the Brown Act. And I suspect that's part of the reason why it's gone through all these different iterations. But all of these are excuses. It needs to get done. It's there. The plan is done. We have parties who are willing to get it done, and it needs a champion to make it happen. I don't believe that there exists that champion downtown in City Hall right now.
Ms. Valdez-Jeager, thirty seconds.
Yes, as a public transportation user and provider for over sixteen years, and as a user more than that, I think it's utmost importance that we provide a seamless transportation experience moving forward. We're going to have huge issues with construction on including the HOV, completing the HOV project on our 91 freeway. We're going to need to move Greyhound back to a multimodal center so that we, again, we connect everyone, both those who are coming in to go to school, those who are working here, but also the reverse commuters here in the city of Riverside. Thank you.
Ms. Petrazzello?
Well, one thing we need to look at, and our city does this very well, when there's something they don't want, they tend to move it away so we don't have to deal with it. But we absolutely do need a transportation system that works for all residents.
And Mr. Gardner, you have thirty seconds. Please turn off your cell phones, please, please, please.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you. We continue with Damian O'Farrell.
In light of recent questions regarding Marcy Library appraisal, car allowances, and various council perks, what changes would you make to ensure more transparency at City Hall and to provide timely access to public documents pertaining to city government issues?
And we're going to start with Ms. Valdez-Jeager.
Transparency is very important if you want to continue to have trust in your own city government, state government, or federal government. Moving forward in terms of efforts like the Marcy Branch Library, I commend the citizens who actually brought to the attention to the public that issue because clearly that was a process that was flawed. I would definitely, as council member, make sure that that process was immediately addressed, looked at, and never happen again. We need to make sure that our staff are properly trained. We need to make sure that they are comfortable when they see something incorrect, that they are comfortable enough to bring it up to upper management. But also, we need to hold our council members accountable as residents. In terms of, you mentioned, I'm sorry, besides the Marcy Branch, you mentioned another item?
Car allowances and various council perks.
In terms of the council perks, I have no problem letting people know how much gas I use of a car, how much in terms of benefits. It's an open process. We're using taxpayer dollars. That's a contract with the taxpayer on how we're doing our job. So I'm an open book when it comes to that.
Mr. Gardner?
I think we need to continue working on changing the culture in City Hall. When I got there, it was a very adversarial relationship between the public and the constituents. We've improved that some. People don't feel unwelcome coming to the console any longer. We don't have people ejected from council meetings. They don't get nasty letters from the city attorney, chastising them for their behavior. That's the first step. We have to remember as your representatives that the city's business is the people's business. The city hasn't got any of its own business. All the city's business is the people's business. And I think part of the role of city staff and city-appointed officials is to help people access documents and information that they want in the most timely manner that can be provided. On car allowances, we do have a car allowance now, or a car. I never took the car. I do accept the car allowance. If that goes away, that's fine. It is a burden to keep track of mileage, the way the IRS wants it to be kept track of, if you're going to bill for mileage. But that's, it's not that much money. I don't think it's that important.
Mr. Betro?
Well, I don't think you have all the facts on the Marcy Library issue. The Historical Society has approved the use of that, and it, you're Society has approved the use of that, and it, you really have not heard the full value of what the transferee is facing in terms of the loss of business and the loss of his livelihood, because of the building of that great separation on Magnolia. And that's what has happened in this city, is that small businesses have been run over, rough trotted over. Arts Bar &amp; Grill in Ward 1 also, their parking spaces were taken away after 30 years of, you know, an agreement with the city, and now they're told to make it on their own. So you've got this lack of transparency in order to put one's point forward. So when you ask the question of transparency, transparent to whom and about what? You've gotta get all the information. And City Hall is not giving out all the information, whether it's on this Marcy Branch Library transfer, or whether it's about how they're using the car allowances. And what I see is a whole bunch of perks that have been put in place. The legislative analysts, $400,000 a year for legislative aides on a city council position, more than what the city councilman gets paid. Perks with cars and taking allowances. I think it should be mileage only. I've also asked for-
Dom, time.
A 10% cut on council salaries.
Dom, given that you had said you would not support a part-time, a full-time city council's position, are you saying that you would keep a part-time councilman and eliminate the legislative aide?
I don't think the issue is full-time, part-time. I think it's effectiveness, and I think it's salaries.
Would you eliminate the legislative aide position?
I would eliminate the legislative aide position. The position should be about governance and trusteeship, and we have more than enough staff at the city to take care of constituent needs. The 3-1-1 system, which was not in effect when I was last on the council, is now in fully in effect, and I've had opportunity to use it. It works well.
Okay. Ms. Petrazzello.
Yes, we need to go beyond transparency. We need to be transpicuous in our reporting and letting the community know exactly salaries, benefits. Just don't post the salary on the website, which I don't think I've seen yet. But also, post the benefits and what they're being paid. Let us know when, we have a sewer fund that we're taking $22 million out of and building a Orange Street parking garage and putting parking meters. Those are the types of things that our community needs to know. What I would do is I would have an independent citizen audit committee added to the charter. Those people train to look at the audits, so that when we get our audits from Mayor Hoffman-McCann, they are not so vague. And when the people are auditing it, and they have the questions, those questions can be answered. We also need to make sure that the people who are on these committees are people who are there for the purpose of that. They're not the few hand-selected people to tell the council and city management what they want to hear. Transpicuous is very definite than transparent. You can be transparent and only give, as our city does, only give us a little bit. And then it's up to us to figure out which question to ask. We shouldn't have to figure out which question to ask. Why are we asking the questions? You should be telling us this information, and it should be easily accessible and easy to understand.
Just to be fair, before we go to the 30-second comment, I'd like to ask each candidate other than Mr. Petro to give a one-word answer to the following question, which is, would you support the elimination of the legislative aide position? Mr. Petro said he would. One-word answer. We'll start with Marissa.
Not at this time.
Devon.
I've seen a different model. We had a couple-
Yes or no?
Couple people, yes or no. Probably not at this time.
Okay. Mike?
No.
Thank you. Okay, 30-second response. We will start with Ms. Valdez-Jeager.
I'm here before you, because accountability is huge. Obviously, there's plenty of examples that have been portrayed here before us on confusion about process, confusion about roles. And here, I stand before you to promise that I, as a council member, have a contract with the taxpayer, and all taxpayer dollars will be accountable. All taxpayer dollars will be shared. And I will continue to educate our residents and our taxpayers on the process, so they know how their taxpayers are used accordingly.
Thank you. Devon.
I pledge to change the city charter to include a citizens audit committee that will ensure that the future of this city is secure. I'll hold trainings across the city to teach people how to read the finances at City Hall, holding our feet to the fire. I will do my homework to make sure that all spending is legal, ethical, and supports the growth of this city to reflect the needs and the wants of the people. The people of this ward, the people of the city, will know what's going on, as we fight to stop this wasteful spending and breach of trust at City Hall and with city management.
Thank you. Dom.
Transparency is a different kind of problem at City Hall, and in particular, in Ward 1. It is transparency around deals that have been done, like the deals in taking the property next to the Fox Theater and where Simple Simons is, under the threat of eminent domain, without letting that be known to the public, and then putting up some public purpose, and paying people more than appraised values for those properties. That is a different type of transparency that the average voter will not investigate, unless the press or someone else takes the time to do so.
Thank you, Dom. Mr. Gardner.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up a little bit on the question on the Marcy Branch Library. That actually will be heard by the Development Committee tomorrow afternoon. I chair that committee. The meeting's at 3 o'clock in the mayor's ceremonial room. It is a complex subject. If you have an opinion, please come and share it.
Thank you, Mike. We're gonna continue with Orlando Ramirez of La Prinsa.
To follow up about some deals and things that are going on, recently, the city council approved a number of projects to protect the redevelopment dollars. The downtown library was not brought forward by city staff for consideration. What do you believe the city should do to rehabilitate the downtown library, and how would you fund it?
And we're gonna start with Devon.
Well, the downtown library should have been the first project, rather than the last. The library is the heart of our community. It reflects who we are. In the times of the Greeks, a library was the place for information, where art flourished, where information flourished. How to pay for it? Well, we seem to be able to take $22 million to buy, to put in a parking structure over on Orange Street and put in parking meters. We also seem to take $6 million out of a fund to purchase the parking lot over at the Fox Theater. We seem to be able to get $40 million for the Rain Cross Promenade. So how we're gonna fund it, probably the same way they're funding everything else.
Marissa.
First and foremost, Renaissance, the first top, or top two projects was supposed to be the library and the museum. That, of course, we're here today, has not happened. There was a defined funding for both of those projects, and somehow, in the management of the implementation of Renaissance, there was not enough contingency budget to handle the over, or overcosts of the other projects that were completed. Moving forward, we need to evaluate that, because why did those two projects suffer in addition to some others, when supposedly, we're about to complete Renaissance? Again, the initial funding package for both the library and the museum, obviously, was flawed, because they were able to take funds and complete the other projects, but not finish those. So moving forward, in terms of the funds that are available now, they are trying to get redevelopment funds, but we know, in fact, that that could possibly be eliminated. So we need to have a Plan B and a C, because we are seeing additional federal deficits, as well as state deficits, in normal programs that we would normally go after, to try to rehab that library or expand upon it, based on the plans moving forward.
Mr. Gardner.
When I took office, there was a proposal to build a facility in front of the downtown library, that would have extended out to where the sidewalk is now, would have blocked views of the Mission Inn as people came down Mission Inn from the freeway. And it was intended to serve both the library and the museum. That's what was in the Renaissance program. It had a $25 million price tag. There were a lot of people, including me, who thought that was a horrible idea. It did not serve either facility well. Each supporters of the library thought it gave too much to the museum. Museum supporters thought it gave too much to the library. I helped create a Blue Ribbon Committee that examined the actual programmatic, programmatic needs of both facilities over a 40-year period, and came up with recommendations for what kind of facility is needed to meet that demand. And the answer that was come up with, and that was ultimately approved by the council, was to do an expansion of the museum behind the museum, and to knock down and build a new central library. I think those are the right things to do. How we fund them is a bit of an issue now. Originally, the thought was that they would be funded by sale of city properties. In this climate, we can't sell enough to make it.
Thank you, Mike. Dom, Petro.
Well, as has been said, when I left office, there was a $25 million plan to renovate the library. It was not finalized. It was a proposed plan. But I had the votes, I had the money, and the Renaissance plan. That was used as a political issue in the campaign. And the result is nothing for four years, and probably nothing for another four years, in terms of renovating the downtown library, except, as the incumbent has said, to spiff it up a little bit. This is a problem. We have found money, $40 million, to build a hotel, which was never put out to bid, and which could have been used for the library, such as the city of Santa Barbara used that money to help public institutions. We spent $15 million, or we're spending it, on a parking structure, mortgaging the Fox. A fire station in the Arlington Library was mortgaged to build the hotel. Why can't we find money for the library? It's not a priority. But in the meantime, we've over-leveraged ourselves. Even according to Paul Sandin, the chief financial officer, we have leveraged every piece of property in our redevelopment area in the city. Out of our $883 million budget, $137 million goes for debt service each year. That is money coming out of the taxpayer's project, of taxpayer's pocket, and not creating the amenities that we created in the Renaissance, such as libraries and parks and all kinds of things.
As part of your 30-second follow-up, maybe we'll give you a little leeway, I'd like to answer, you to answer the following question. As you probably know, Governor Jerry Brown of California has called for the elimination of redevelopment agencies. I would be interested to hear if you support his proposal to eliminate redevelopment agencies throughout the state of California. And we can start with Ms. Valdez-Jeager.
Business is not as usual anymore. Jerry Brown's, Governor Jerry Brown's proposal to eliminate the redevelopment is a tool he's trying to accomplish to meet the needs of our state. From the perspective of the local government, there is ample opportunities and great examples here in City of Riverside. However, there's bad examples here in our county. Moving forward, I've been in government long enough to know that if redevelopment is taken away, that means our property taxes, as well as school revenues, there's going to be another program. And there's already legislation in the state government now to propose finance infrastructure districts to replace redevelopment programs. But also, it only addresses or uses our property taxes, not the funds that we take from our schools to fund our redevelopment projects.
Devon.
I support getting rid of redevelopment, in part because Governor Brown is getting rid of it because of the abuses. And we have a very prominent abuse, like the Rain Cross Promenade in our city. And what people need to understand is, the redevelopment money does not go back into our city coffers for the next 50 years. We're paying high amounts of interest on that. That money doesn't go back to our parks. It doesn't go back to our schools. It doesn't go back. It goes to pay off redevelopment. Now, we want the city to buy $65 million in redevelopment bonds. We've mortgaged our city to the limit.
Do you support or oppose Governor Brown's-
Oh, I support Governor Brown.
To eliminate redevelopment agencies?
To eliminate redevelopment.
Okay. Dom Petro.
I'm supporting it. Even though I've been a big proponent of utilizing redevelopment dollars in the past while we had them, that was under the circumstances of, ever since Prop 13, this state has been totally dysfunctional in terms of how it manages taxes and where they go. And redevelopment was a tool to be used by cities to try to create some good. And that's why I tried to focus my efforts on creating public service institutions and housing with redevelopment dollars. But what has happened the past few months, I mean, the county refused to buy the debt of the city, probably because they felt it was too risky of the redevelopment agency. And so, the city bought its own redevelopment bonds. This has given, this has made the case for me that we just cannot continue like this. And the governor has made a point, but I think what we need to do is make sure that we don't end up with the services with no money to provide them, as the, as the exchange.
Before Mike answers, I just want to get on the record Marissa's view. Do you support or oppose Governor Brown's proposal to eliminate redevelopment?
At this time, yes, I support.
Mr. Gardner.
I oppose the governor's plan to eliminate redevelopment. Fix it, yes. Eliminate it, no.
Thank you. And our last question comes from Mr. Christmas.
Do you think the city's current pension system is sustainable? Do you favor a new second-tier system for new employees? Should the city end the practice of covering employees' share of pension cost even for existing workers?
We'll start with Mr. Gardner.
I'm sorry, Brad, was that me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think there are legitimate questions as to whether the current pension plan is sustainable. There are a number of ways to approach trying to fix that. A second-tier system is one. Another component can be having all employees pay their share of the pension payment. For most employees, that's 8% of salary. For public safety employees, that's 9%. We can change other parts of the formula, where retirement is eligible at a different age. We can change the percentage of your salary that you're, that goes into the formula. For most employees, it's 2.7%. For public safety, it's 3%. All those things need to be talked about. The union leadership of several of our employee unions have indicated they have some specific preferences and some ideas. I think we need to talk with them about their ideas, and together, come to some kind of conclusion and reach an agreement on what will work and what is sustainable.
Thank you, Mike. We're gonna proceed with Mr. Dom Petro.
Well, to answer your question specifically, no, it is not sustainable, number one. Number two, the two-tiered system is only part of the solution. And it will only solve part of the problem. And thirdly, the, I'm sorry, what was the third?
The employee's share.
The employee's share. I happen to believe that we should honor our current agreements with our current employees. And so, the way we have to approach this is much more comprehensively and much more thoughtfully, because it is bigger than just the City of Riverside. First of all, the people who are the workers, the ones who only end up with a $17,000 pension are not the problem. The problem is the people who are in upper management and taking huge deals and getting huge pension benefits that the press picks up on and talks about. We have to look at our management structure. When I left the city, we were like at somewhere between three and four employees per manager. That is way high. We could probably go down to six to one, or seven to one, and have significant savings there, as one example. We need to look at the state. Why do we have two pension systems in this state? Why do we have employees that can retire from one job and go to another job, and pick up a salary, and pick up a new pension, and end up earning half a million dollars a year? That hurts us all, as residents of the state of California. So we have to look beyond Riverside borders to solve this.
Ms. Petrazzello.
It's a difficult problem. That takes some difficult and tough choices. We do need to look at the system. We probably won't be able to sustain the system. But before we actually look at taking away benefits and share of costs, because we know, once they're taken away, we're not gonna give them back, even when we have better financial times. We need to look at a city, and we need to look at our spending and where we can make the cuts, just like we do in our own households, when we have an expense we have to make. We look at where we can cut. And I believe that the city has a lot of waste that they can cut, that might not impact our employees as much as- that they can cut that might not impact our employees as much as we're talking about. We have high management salaries with unqualified people. Those are areas we can look at. We just need to take one area at a time before we actually impact these employees. They are people in our community. Look at the long term. These people are going to be able to, hopefully, be able to afford to stay in our community, be able to afford the housing once they have their pensions cut, and are they going to be spending this money in our community? So before we make these cuts, we need to really sit down, have open, honest discussions, and something that works for both sides.
Ms. Valdez-Jager.
People went to work for the city because they knew in retirement they would receive a monthly paycheck from their pension plan that they spent and contributed many years into that investment. They thought at the time that it was stable. Now, no, it's not sustainable from the numbers that have been provided to us. But public employees and private enterprises have created a need to increase costs because we have to competently recruit talent in order to keep them here. While at the same time, our residents, as well as businesses, have increased demands. This past decade, we've seen healthcare costs go up as well as CalPERS costs going up because of bad investments. At the time, we thought they were good investments, but because of the mortgage investments that had plunged in 2005 to 2007, that's created additional 5% to 8% costs for all of our cities here in the state of California. This city could have planned for that. In the good times, we could have put some money away because they knew at that time that there was some forecasting that there would be a decline in investment and CalPERS costs would go up. So I would definitely support working together with both our employees, management, nonrepresented, represented, to make sure that we can create a sustainable program moving forward.
In the follow-ups, I'd like you to answer whether this question should be addressed in the first year of the new city council term. We'll start with Mike Gardner.
It's not really a question of whether it's addressed in the first year of the council term. It's a question of whether it's addressed when the contracts run out, and they happen to be running out this year. So they will be addressed, whether we like it or not, this year. I think one of the keys to solving this is to cooperate with our employees. This is a partnership. Working together, we can find a way to make it work, and I'm confident that we'll be successful.
Thank you. Dom.
It has to be addressed now. With the debt that we have already taken on in the city, coupled with the pension liabilities that we are facing, this city will be in for tough times, especially if there are problems in the municipal bond market affecting the debt that we have. And that's why I have proposed, in addition to the 10% salary cut for council members, that we need to cut by 10% the salaries of upper management in the city. We need to start looking to preserve services, not by cutting out the workers, but by cutting out the fat.
Thank you. Devon.
We absolutely need to start addressing this now. I'm a union employee, and I know that these cuts are going to affect me personally also. But we have a really good relationship with my union, and that means a lot to me. I know that they're working very hard to be fair, and we're willing to take some cuts to make sure we preserve jobs and we preserve the system in the future.
And Marissa.
Trust and nurturing relationships are very important. And so, moving forward, I question why we are now in the month of April and the current contracts here in the city expire in June. I definitely want to encourage our city to get at the table so that we can address appropriately the issues that are before us, especially as it relates to additional budget cuts that are moving in our face, that we all need to account for. And I don't approach nor do I support last-minute negotiations and putting our backs to the table, so to speak, or the walls, to accept a program that could truly affect our residents.
Before we proceed to closing statements, I would like to thank the candidates for a very substantive discussion today. I'd also like to thank our outstanding panelists, Damian O'Farrell, Path of Life Ministries and a Rain Cross member, Orlando Ramirez of La Presa Press Enterprise, Gary Christmas of the Rain Cross Group. And let us proceed to closing statements. We're going to start with Mr. Dom Betro.
Thank you, Brad, and thank you to the panel for the very challenging questions and all of you for being here, and those of you who will see this. During the past three and a half years, we have seen the systematic return to the past failed strategies that harmed Ward One, the downtown, and this city. Strategies in which the big vision was to build another parking structure, $20 million to fund a no-bid project which the private sector wouldn't touch, all at the expense of the taxpayer, and by also mortgaging the Fox Theater and every asset that we have, turning Main Street, California, into Wall Street, USA. I know we can do better because we did just that during the four years I was in office. We did it by not seizing our destiny, but by realizing our destiny, investing prudently, planning wisely, and allowing competition to determine what gets done. And also by providing legislative oversight and policy direction to an entrepreneurial city manager in occasional need of redirection. This is a time when our priority needs to be on helping the taxpayers in this town, the small businesses and homeowners who have made this city great. It is time for them to get a break from high utility rates and a utility transfer of almost $40 million per year to a city budget that has run amok with perks, excessive management, and management benefits and unbridled spending. Instead of generating revenue by attempting to tax residents with parking meters, red light cameras, and other hitting tax schemes, it is time to implement a real economic development plan with emphasis on job creation. As I mentioned, $3 million to budget and incentivize the creation of 200 to 300 small business jobs, which will have an economic impact of over $30 million in the city. And by creating significant home ownership opportunities for 100 families per year, not the minimal amount that we have funded in the past three years. This is an ambitious and bold agenda, but that is what public service leadership is about. Putting the public's benefit first, not your own full-time job, self-serving interests.
Dom.
I hope that you consider joining me in these efforts by voting for me as your Ward One councilman, and this time, please vote by June 4th. Thank you.
Very good. Sorry for laughing. We're going to proceed with Devon Petra Zello.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Rain Cross Group for holding this forum. It's very, very important to the democratic process that the community be involved and make that choice, and that you let them know who their choices are. So in closing, let me say that the people of this ward, the people of the city, will know what's going on when I'm elected. We will fight to stop this wasteful spending and breach of trust of city management and elected officials at City Hall. I realize that when elected, I may be the lone voice on this city council that protests, but I assure you, they will hear me loud and clear, the voice of its citizens. Let me close here by asking this question. Mr. Betro and Mr. Gardner have already let it be known that they want to run for mayor next year. So the question is, who is going to represent the interest of Ward One for the next three years? We know it won't be done by a special election, but rather by some hand-picked friend of the existing council. My pledge to you is that I will be here for you over the next four years and perhaps even more. I cannot do this alone. I need your help. You are registered to vote. Now I need you to fill out the ballot. Vote for Petra Zello, a better choice for Ward One. Fill it in, number two on the ballot, and then mail it. Together, we can stand for what is right in this city and make a difference at City Hall and in our community. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Mr. Betro, do you plan to run for mayor of Riverside?
No.
Mr. Gardner, do you plan to run for mayor of Riverside?
I have no such plan.
Okay. We're going to continue with Ms. Jager. Do you plan to run for mayor of Riverside?
No.
And Ms. Petra Zello, do you plan to run for mayor of Riverside? Okay, let's proceed to Marissa.
I'm sorry.
Please. Yes. Thank you, Marissa.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the organizers and supporters who are here today and for the viewers at home. Here on this stage, four years ago, candidate Mike Gardner said he was running because he wanted to return his sense of openness and trust to City Hall because, as he said, "Citizens feel they are not listened to and that their opinion is not wanted." Four years later, the structure of city council agenda has not changed, and the citizens of Riverside are still not free to speak to any agenda item they choose. Four years ago, candidate Gardner said he believed, "We need jobs for the people who already live here," and that "we should devote our little remaining developable land to projects that are job-intensive rather than land-intensive." I couldn't agree more. But four years later, where are we? Nearly 14% of our residents are unemployed with no new jobs in sight. Four years ago, candidate Gardner alleged that former Councilman Betro didn't even ask for an independent appraisal of the land value, but instead used the buyer's appraisal. Councilmember Gardner did the same thing when he voted to buy property from a campaign contributor based on the seller's appraisal, which was higher than the market value. Four years ago, candidate Gardner said he was running because Councilmember Betro had voted to take the entire Market Street frontage of Fairmont Park away from the Parks Department and transfer it to the redevelopment agency. Councilmember Gardner did the exact same thing when as Chair of the Development Committee, he signed off on the deal to transfer the Marcy Branch Library to the redevelopment agency so it could be swapped at below-market value and turned into a fast-food restaurant. Four years ago, candidate Gardner said that "we deserve a council member who cares what the citizens think and who will get it right the first time." I agree. And while City Hall may be more pleasant and approachable, nice is not enough. Time and again, Councilmember Gardner did not get it right, and residents are paying the price. Riverside deserves better. As your next councilperson, I will ask you what you need. I won't tell you whatever you want to hear just to make you feel good. I will tell you what we all need to know. I will always put the best interests of the residents at the center of every decision. My name is Marisa Valdez-Jager, and together, we can make the future bright again with a next generation of leadership. I ask for your vote, June 7.
Mr. Mike Gardner.
Riverside is out of cheap dirt, and we don't need any more warehouses. We need businesses that are job-intensive, not land-intensive. We're uniquely poised to outcompete every other city in the region over the next few years. We have a great city with many features corporate leaders and business owners are seeking. We can take advantage of our low utility rates, attractive city, and available space to attract high-tech companies and clean manufacturing. These are the kinds of industries that will provide the jobs that people can live on with the benefits that they can rely on. With reduced state and federal funding and the possible demise of redevelopment as we know it, most jurisdictions will be slashing their economic development staffs and their efforts. I want Riverside to increase ours. We have a talented economic development staff, and we can't afford to let them slip away to other jobs. We can put together an economic development program that focuses on the kinds of businesses and industries that will benefit our city and bring the jobs that we need here. We've started doing some of this in 2010 alone, more than a thousand, I'm sorry, almost 1,000 new jobs were created in the Hunter Park area of Ward One alone. I'm the only Ward One candidate that does not have a full-time job in another city. Two of us have full-time jobs in other counties. I will devote the time, energy, foresight, leadership that is required to move Ward One and the city of Riverside forward without being distracted by another job and a commute. I did that in my first term during the worst economic times in most of our memories. I'm best suited to do the same as we come out of the recession and reach for our future. I would appreciate your support. And it is important to mail your ballot early because both Mr. Betro and I sat at the registrar's office during the count and then the recount, and it was just heartbreaking to see the number of ballots that were received late and were never opened.
They were all mine.
And as you know, that election was decided by seven votes. Seven votes. Every vote counts. This concludes the 2011 Rain Cross Debate for Ward One. Congratulations, candidates. Excellent job. I personally would like to thank Tom Donahue and Phil Pitchford of the Rain Cross Group, Maria De Verain from the Press Enterprise, Del Heintz and Sandra McGahn, you have Charter Communications, for inviting me to moderate. Thank you very, very much. And we'd like to express, on behalf of the Rain Cross Group, its appreciation to the candidates for their willingness to participate. Thank you to the panel members, outstanding questions, outstanding responses. Again, thank you to the Press Enterprise and Charter, whose efforts made this debate possible and who will bring this broadcast to thousands of homes across the city. Of course, we thank our viewers at PE.com and Charter Channel 101. And we thank the outreach of the League of Women Voters, the Pick Group, and Latino Network for contributing to our questions. And a huge thank you to Cal Baptist University for their continuing support of the Rain Cross debates. We could not do it without you. Enjoy lunch. Thank you so much.